You all ready?
Ready.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get an approval of the minutes of meetings held September 25th and October 4th, please?
Come on over.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Any persons wishing to address the board? Nope, thanks, Beth. And can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Deanne, good news report.
Good evening. Since 1990, South Dakota has been celebrating the nation's earliest inhabitants by declaring the 2nd Monday of October Native American Day in South Dakota, while many other states celebrate the long-running holiday known as Columbus Day. Of course, Native Americans were the first to discover and live off of our land here in the United States. With that knowledge in hand, Native American Connections facilitator Anna Brokenleg Keller, students and community members set out to create an educational video. Since we made it live on the Sioux Falls School District's YouTube channel last Thursday, October 5th, I just checked about 30 seconds ago, we have broken the 900 mark for number of views. We are currently at 914, and as I've been watching it in the last hour or so, it's about one view per minute we keep ticking up. So that's super exciting to see the number of people who have viewed this educational video. It does serve as a true reminder of why South Dakota celebrates its first people, and we will view it here.
Who are Native Americans?
Native Americans are the citizens of tribes all over North America. Their ancestors were the first people who lived in North America. Native means first people. Native Americans were here before European explorers came across the ocean.
How long have Native Americans lived here?
For a long time.
For seven years?
For 14 years?
For 80 years?
Native Americans have been living here since before the United States became a country and Europeans came to North America.
Even before Columbus?
Yeah!
Before the dinosaurs?
Don't be silly!
Where do Native Americans live?
Are there Native Americans in our schools?
Are there Native Americans in our communities?
I am Native. I am Native.
Are there Native Americans in our state?
I am Native.
I am Native.
Are Native Americans Indians?
The name Indian was given when Columbus thought he reached the country of India, so he called the people he met Indians.
Do we call Native Americans Indians?
Native Americans were the first people, so we can use the names Native Americans, American Indians. First people are the specific tribal name to which they belong, like Ogalala, Cheyenne, or Dunay.
Why do we celebrate Native American Day instead of Columbus Day?
According to 1-5-1.2 in South Dakota law, Native American Day is dedicated to the remembrance of the great Native American leaders who contributed so much to the history of our state.
How will you celebrate and recognize Native American Day?
So what makes that video all the more special is the fact that Brulee and their music is playing underneath, which they are, of course, an indigenous band from South Dakota as well. So very cool representation of the Native American staff members, community members, and students that we have in the Sioux Falls School District, giving us a lot to celebrate. Anna Brokenleg Keller is with us. She's a member of Hawthorne staff, and she's going to come up this evening to tell us a little bit more about how this video came to be and also share with us some other information from our city.
So thank you very much for having me this evening. I'd like to take credit for the video, but really it was a wonderful collaborative project with the Elementary Native Americans Connections facilitators from the Sioux Falls School District, helping to research and write the script and make sure everything was accurate and well researched. And of course, all of the students and staff members who helped contribute their time and effort, and Ben Schumacher, of course, and his wonderful production abilities to help us make all of this happen. It was a pleasure to be able to do it and make it and help the kids get involved in being part of the education process for other people in our community. I was also privileged enough to be at the city council meeting on Tuesday, and I'd like to read for you quickly a short proclamation from the city council mayor Mike Huether. Whereas in 1990, South Dakota was the first state to declare the 2nd Monday in October as Native American Day and made it an official state holiday; whereas South Dakota is home to nine tribes of the Lakota, Dakota, Nakota people; whereas Native American people play a vital and integral role in shaping the future of our state, nation, and city; whereas Native American people were the original stewards of the land and have played a crucial role in policy development; whereas Native American people have contributed to the cultural heritage and history of our country, state, and city; whereas Native American people help in strengthening our community; whereas Native American Day reminds us to celebrate the contributions and heritage of Native Americans in the United States, South Dakota, and Sioux Falls. Now therefore, I, Mike T. Huether, Mayor of the City of Sioux Falls, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2017, as Native American Day in Sioux Falls and encourage all community members to unite in commemorating this day and celebrating our native neighbors, friends, and leaders. So thank you for helping us celebrate today.
Anna's nephew, Miles, was the one in the dashing suit coat in the video. And so, Miles, we invited him, and he and the other students in the video really took on a teaching role in this video, helping us to have those conversations about why it's important that we celebrate Native American Day. So we're going to ask Miles to tell us a little bit about himself and maybe include in their thoughts for the future, what he'd like to do when he grows up. So, Miles, the microphone is yours.
Alrighty then. So, okay. So I am 12 years old, and I go to Edison Middle School, and I am enrolled in the Rosebud Tribe. And I was hoping, I am hoping, that I can go to college when I am older and possibly medical school to become a doctor when I'm older. So, yeah.
Thank you, Miles.
Congratulations.
Thank you, both of you, for coming and speaking tonight. It is a great video, and I'm actually itching to get on my phone so I can post it and help spread the word, but I'll wait until after the board meeting. And good luck to you, Miles. Middle School School, that's awesome. So we know you can do it. So thank you so much for coming tonight, and it's a great production. So thanks to Deanne and Ben. I know how much work you all put into it. You said it's on the YouTube channel. Is it also on the district webpage now or just the YouTube?
YouTube, and then it's been pushed out on Facebook and Twitter.
Okay, perfect. Carly wants to do that, too.
I do. That's very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any conflicts of interest to report? I saw any. Okay. Can I get an approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, supplemental consent agenda. Items A, 1 through 3, claims to Sanford Healthcare System. I get a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Right, that passes with two abstentions, Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. And can I get a motion for items 9B, claims to Avera?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes one abstention from myself. All right, on to the reports of the superintendent.
Okay, our first report tonight is the report from year two of the Summer Climb Program. You'll remember that Summer Climb was a summer program that we instituted in the summer of 2016, really to help us try to get our students on par with their district-wide and statewide peers in regard to summer, or in regard to reading and math achievement. So with that, an update on our results is Dr. Boyson from our Curriculum Services Department.
Good evening. Here tonight, just to update you on the second year of Summer Climb. This last past summer, we had 231 students in grades K through 3 at LBA Hawthorne and Hayward Elementary Schools participate in the Summer Climb Program. The enrollment increased by 60 students, or 39% over the previous year, and 78 of those 231 students were second-year attendees in the program. Students were selected to participate in the Summer Climb Program based on their needs for additional support in reading and math, as evidenced by their scores on the developmental reading assessment, the DRA Advantage Math Recovery, ABMR, and the MAP Assessment, the measures of academic progress. So that's how our students were identified. They attended the Summer Climb for eight weeks, Monday through Thursday. They arrived between 8:15 and 8:30, had some breakfast, a little physical activity, and then they were engaged in reading, writing, and math skills in the morning, and then they had the afternoons filled with opportunities to apply those skills in real-world activities through field trips and projects in those buildings. Student engagement and motivation for the Summer Climb Program was assessed through behavior and attendance reports. On our first slide here, it shows the average number of attendance, and that average number of absences increased slightly over the past year at Hawthorne and Hayward, and it was lower than the previous year at... decreased at LBA. Well, it increased at all three sites, I'm sorry, over the past year. And then behaviors were noted, they increased this year. We had zero behavior incidents the first year and just a few this past year. So nothing major, but still needed to note that in the report. We used the NWA to measure their growth from the spring of 2017 to the fall of 2017, and grades K through 2 took the MAP growth for primary grades, the MPG, and the students in third grade took the MAP assessment. And the primary grade assessment has a read-aloud feature, and it focuses on early literacy and numeracy skills, while the third through sixth grade assessment focuses more on content knowledge and alignment to grade-level standards. So we'll look at those growth scores for that. The MPG and the MAP data measures student growth. We're going to look at, first of all, we will look at the Summer Climb in the area of math. The data indicates that the students who participated in Summer Climb and their non-attending peers all experienced what we like to call the summer slide. However, the students in the Summer Climb Program regressed less than their non-attending peers, if that makes sense. So that first group in kindergarten are, in the light blue, are Summer Climb students, and they had a growth, they did have growth, 1.2 as measured to their non-attending peers at 1.6. So they measured growth, but first, second, and third grade students had a regression of skills over that summer, from the spring of 2017 to the fall of 2017. And that's in the reading in the area of math. And then we'll look at the area of reading. Kindergarten, first, and third grade students who participated in Summer Climb showed academic growth from the spring of 2017 to the fall of 2017, as measured by the MPG and the MAP assessments. Kindergarten growth was, in Summer Climb, was 9 tenths as compared to their non-attending peers of 2.9. And then first grade, Summer Climb students had a growth of 2.6, so they outpaced their first-grade non-attending peers. Second grade, we see that decline, and you noticed that on the previous slide, too, the big dip that goes from, in that second-grade group. But we have to remember, in the spring, they took the MPG assessment, but in the fall, they're third graders, so they take the MAP assessment, and those are two different tests, but we still compare their data. So that's why you see that big decline in both the reading and the math area. So that's important to note. And then when you look at third grade in reading, we had a growth of 2.2 for Summer Climb students and non-attending peers of 2.9. Those are our students that attended for one year. Then we were curious to see how our students that attended for two years in Summer Climb did. And so we looked at, these are the 78 students that attended for the two years. So the second-grade students displayed... I'm sorry. Should be, yep. So when we look at this, the students displayed a negative 3.4 in reading as compared to their non-attending peers of a 5.2. So when we look at, these are our second-year students, I'm sorry, kindergarten. I'm on the last slide there. Okay, let me start over. The summer 2017 was the second year for Summer Climb. 78 of the original 171 students returned for a second year of the program. Student growth in the area of math and reading for the second year participated is documented here on these two charts. So when you look at this, our students that participated in the second year of Summer Climb made nice growth. Like, when they, the students that started as kindergarteners, but now this fall, our second graders outpaced their non-attending peers. Our first graders the first year, who are now third graders, again outpaced their non-attending peers, and the same thing happened with the students that started as second graders, but are fourth graders right now. So nice growth in all grade levels there in math. And when we look at reading, we see that same growth in reading for the students that are currently second graders. It's not quite as high as their non-attending peers, but it's so close. And then when we have first to third grade outpace their non-attending peers, and second to fourth outpace those non-attending peers also. So we can see as students participate in that program for more than one year, that the advantages are there for those students, and they are making gains over their non-attending peers. So we had 231 students in K through 3 at Laura B. Anderson Hawthorne and Hayward participated in the Summer Climb Program for the summer of 2017. The enrollment increased 60 students over the previous year, and 78 of those students returned for a second year. Student growth was measured by the MPG and the MAP assessments. Students who participated in one year of the program experienced summer slide, but to a lesser extent as compared to their non-attending peers in the areas of math and reading. However, students who returned for a second year of Summer Climb outpaced their non-attending peers in math and reading. Questions?
I'm curious, do we have any data before the summer slide program was started as to the demographics, if they were, what their typical percentage of summer slide was prior to the program being implemented at all?
That is a good question, and I'm not sure...
We would have smarter balance results for third graders, but not for K1 or 2. And we didn't give the MAP test then, so we wouldn't have that. I don't know, I don't know what else there might be.
Unless, right, unless we could look at DRA scores.
But that would be the only thing that we would have, that would be consistent across those.
Can you remind me, the 60 additional students this year, we added staff, or we identified more students that qualified, or a combination of the two?
Good question. You know, we wanted, typically it was for K through 2, but we wanted to be able to include those students that were second graders last summer to come back as third graders this summer, so we did add an additional stat, so that way we could have those third graders come back. So then that's why we have third-grade information where we didn't have that last year.
Thank you. And what about the students that did not return? Did we ask why? Did we seek out any information about maybe why they chose not to?
I don't have anything written. You know, the building administration really worked hard with those families to get them to return, and it was for various reasons that they chose not to. Same thing with the absences. When you look at that, the number's a little bit higher, but it's still allowed students to participate in camps and vacations and those types of opportunities. But the strength is there with those students that did return, and I think that will be a great selling point when they go out to recruit for this next year, for the third year.
Absolutely, I agree. I think, too, when you look at the numbers, you know, it's easy to say the non-attending peers, but some of those peers maybe didn't need to attend and were already doing very well. So when you're comparing numbers to saying, say, the students who didn't participate, it may have very well been that they didn't need to participate because they were at grade level or above grade level. So when you're comparing them, you're already kind of, I don't know, I don't want to say competing, but you're not really looking at students maybe who needed the help. And so I think that gives even more emphasis to the strength of the program to say, look at how close we've gotten to these students, to maybe their peers that were already at grade level or who were performing. So I think, maybe thinking about that when you're comparing the numbers and not just saying, well, these students didn't go, they didn't go because they were already doing very well, and now we've gotten our students to be closer to where those students are at, so.
I think that's a really great point, because it is the whole peer group that we're comparing them against. It's not just students who would qualify.
Right.
It's that whole peer group. So, thank you.
The MPG and the MAP, are those mandated to be given at those grade levels? I mean, there's a little bit of a disparity in how the results come out. Can we give the MAP? That's...
Yep, good question. MPG is for the measurement of academic progress for primary, and then it's the measure of academic progress for intermediate. And just the K2 is read to them, and it's, the skills are more foundational. So if they hit a certain RIT score, and that's the score we, then we can give them the MAP at younger grades, but we wouldn't know that until they take that assessment, that winter assessment. So some of them might be ready, but the students probably for our Summer Climb Program are given the right assessment based on their RIT score. So, yes. So when they're ready, we give them that MAP for that intermediate assessment. Good question.
My three big takeaways are this. Number one, there's not a silver bullet. Raising achievement and trying to eliminate the gap that exists between students who are achieving at that age and students who aren't achieving at that age, that's, there's real work to be done there. So that's number one. Number two is students who are achieving Summer Climb one time are regressing less than their peers. So that's, that's good news over the summer. To me, the encouraging news are for those students who have taken advantage both years and seeing what's happening to their achievement scores in relation to their, to their peers in the, in the program and, or not in the program, in their, in their schools. And I think that's where a lot of my optimism lies, and how do we get those students to take multiple years of Summer Climb? That, I think, is going to be one of our big challenges. But there's optimism. We'll have another year and another year of data and see where we go. But it's encouraging, but again, I'll just emphasize, there's no silver bullet.
I ask that you acknowledge the report. Any other questions? There are none. Can I get a motion to approve the Summer Climb report?
So moved.
Any discussion?
Well, just, at least, I'll speak for myself. My questions aren't at all to be critical. This is, these are, these are the kids that we have in our district that are most at risk of not being successful. And as Dr. Maher said, there's not a silver bullet. We're, your measurements are very good. The, the questions that I ask are just to see if, you know, is there something that we can improve? Is there, is there something that maybe we're missing just a little bit that we can tweak? Being on the Budget Committee, I think this is one of the best investments that we can make in, in our kids at the early elementary age. If we don't make that investment there, especially for this group of students, we're going to really struggle to raise our graduation rates in 10 years when we want them to be even higher. These are the kids that we're not going to get to the, to the end of getting the diploma. So, and this is, this was, I think, when Dr. Maher came, was one of the first big new initiatives that you brought to us. And... initiatives that you brought to us. And I think it's a terrific program. Every program that we have can get just a little bit better if we keep working at it. This has been, has been a huge improvement over what we were doing before.
Yeah, makes a difference.
Well, it's, we just, we follow the data, right? We watch the data and we watch, you know, where things are and, and, yeah, I mean, there's always room for improvement if we can find it. And I agree, the numbers are, the numbers are good. So, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Okay.
All right. The second report that we have tonight also comes to us from Curriculum Services. And as you well know, our, many, many, many of our teachers work their tails off in the summer to get ready for things that happen during the school year. And so a report that'll be brought to us tonight by Kristin Granager is a report on some summer research projects.
This is an exciting report to give because the Sioux Falls School Board and the Sioux Falls Education Association have jointly supported summer research as part of the 2013-17 agreement. And last spring, we had a large number of applicants, and we were able to award eight research grants. And so I'm going to briefly give you a short synopsis of each. And then I know many, if not all, of those who received those awards are here tonight, so we'll have a chance to acknowledge them as well. Katie Kopp was looking at results in Algebra II. She was looking for trends between students who were successful in Algebra II and those who did not successfully pass. In looking at the data, she is looking at coming up with specific strategies for students who are coming into Algebra II who have not been successful in prior math classes, and working with teachers across the district to find ways to help those students be successful in Algebra II. Casey Elder and Andrea Peterson looked at the important vocabulary words in our science and social studies, because we know that students really need to use that content vocabulary in the class. They connected that vocabulary with a speaking activity and a go-to strategy, and then also created sentence stems, so students could use those in the classroom. And I probably should have mentioned that they are at the Elementary Immersion Center. So this was specifically geared towards our elementary immersion students. Margaret Dalton is one of our high school instructional coaches, and she was looking at ways that we can be even more effective with that program, particularly due to the fact that in recent years, we've hired a lot of new hires into the district who are veteran teachers. And it's very different to coach a new hire freshly out of a university than it is to hire a new hire who has some veteran experience. And so she was looking at different strategies and reviewed a lot of literature to determine some effective strategies. And she's been sharing those with K-12 coaches in the district this year. Jolene Gordon and Trish Nelson looked at the program Ready Bodies, Learning Minds. And this is a program that works on physiological and neurological motor skills, learning, behavior control, and academic success for kindergarten and first grade students. And through her study, some of the things that she discovered were that using this program did improve motor and stability skills, that bilateral coordination skills were significantly improved, and that behavior occurrences also decreased. Christine Province studied helping struggling readers, excuse me, in the intermediate grades. She was focusing on the importance of fluency in reading comprehension and found that there were some positive results after two years of intensive and direct instruction. She also found two programs that she is using with small group instruction in her reading classroom, and those are wordwork strategies to develop decoding readers and materials through reading horizons. Jenny Taggitts worked with a mindful approach to teaching, and this helps students with some self-regulation strategies, so that they are aware of their emotions and are able to handle those in the school and even outside of school environment. These strategies help students self-regulate. And then because of their ability, there is also some positive correlation in increasing academic skills, because they're not spending time getting in trouble. And she's been working to train staff on these mindfulness strategies so that they can be used by teachers and students this year. Rachel Turner is one of our chemistry teachers who works with our survey of chemistry class. And so she worked this summer to create video lessons. And there are several benefits of these video lessons. For students who are absent for various reasons, they have an opportunity to then view the lesson. And then also for students in recovery programs, or even as just another review outside of class, it's a chance to see that lesson again, stop it, start it, and, and develop further understanding. And then finally, Barb Newitt, who is one of our physics teachers, worked in the AP Physics curriculum. The AP Physics exam requires a lot of critical thinking skills, and so Barb worked to create teacher-written homework problems for three of the AP Physics units. She used AP Physics problems as a guide, and so that, that really gave students some excellent practice for the AP exam. She did look at scores between the 2015-16 and the same unit in the 2016-17 school year, and found that there was an increase after using these strategies. You may have noticed there is a short video playing while I am speaking, because we had so many recipients this year. There is a longer interview version that, a video that will be linked onto the website. So after you watch the Native American video, I encourage you to click on that link as well, where you will see all of our recipients interviewed, and they tell even more about their projects. Do you have any questions? Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I always have comments. So I was just writing, taking notes as you were writing. So we have math, we have language learners, we have coaching strategies for peers, physical therapy, reading, social, emotional, behavioral, chemistry, physics. So I just think it's awesome that there's such a wide range of projects that were going on throughout the summer when you could have all been enjoying your time off, but you were putting your heart and soul and sweat and tears into helping students at all of our levels. I heard high school and elementary and high performing and low performing and all these different ranges. And so I guess I just want to say thank you for the work that you spent your time on in the summer. And, and I just, I love the variety and the sheer numbers of students and teachers too, that you guys will be impacting over the course of this year and for many years to come by taking your time this summer. I know it's not a huge amount that you're paid to do that, so it really is a labor of love, and you're investigating things that you really are passionate about. And so I really appreciate that and the time and energy and the gifts that you're bringing back to our students in the district. So thank you for that.
And maybe we can take a moment to acknowledge those teachers who are here.
Please stand.
Yep.
There are no further questions than I would ask, but you acknowledge the 2017 summer research report. Thank you. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
Second. Any other discussion? I'd just like to echo what Carly said. I mean, thank you for all the hard work. This is actually one of my favorite reports that we get in the fall, because I just love to see what you all are doing in the summer. And, you know, it's, it just, as Carly said, labor of love for you all to be doing it and taking your time over the summer to do it. So thank you very much for being here and for doing all that work. And yeah, this will be the other video I will be watching later tonight. So, absolutely, because I do love to watch those every year. So, thank you.
I know they're all great programs. I personally know the speaking time for immersion students and understand the kids absolutely love that. I'm sure they love all the programs. So thank you guys for, for what you do.
All right. And from the motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay.
Okay. Our third report, I notice Kristin hasn't gone anywhere.
No, I'm still here.
Our third report will be a 2017 high school summer up recovery program report.
Yes. So, beginning in 2016, Washington, Lincoln, and Roosevelt High Schools all offered the summer up recovery program. With the implementation of the four-year cohort, there has been more of an emphasis on helping students to recover if they've gotten behind in their, in their cohort. And every year, there are 25 to 50 students who at the end of the term need a half a credit or a credit to graduate with their cohort. So this program uses online coursework and provides students with the opportunity to earn credits either to graduate or to catch up with their cohort. This summer, Lincoln had 11 students complete requirements for graduation. Roosevelt High School had six, and Washington High School had 13 students who completed requirements to graduate through summer up. The table that you see shows the number of students who were enrolled, the number of courses that they completed, and the number of credits earned in the summers of 2016 and the summers of 2017. And you can see that the number of students has increased each year, and the number of credits earned and courses completed have all increased. Students are not charged to be part of this program. Each high school receives an allocation of just over $15,000 to fund the program. And that pays for teachers to be there to supervise while students are working on online courses. Do you have any questions for me?
No, but thank you for your report. And it just shows that the district is really engaged in making sure everyone, we can meet the needs of everyone, especially those who are so close to graduating and just couldn't get there with their cohorts at the time. So thank you for your time.
What types of classes are offered in the summer? Because I can't imagine, like, when you say 11 students, six and 13 that were able to graduate, I can't imagine that all 11 of those students need the same class, you know what I mean? So what, what classes are offered?
It's a wide variety. A lot of math classes, some English, speech, science classes, just even arts and PE, just a wide variety. Whatever students are missing, we make available to them through the summer up program.
And most of them are online, did you say?
They are online, yes.
Any other questions?
All right. Then I would ask that you acknowledge the results from the summer up recovery program.
Can I get a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just another one of the pathways. I mean, we, we talk about multiple pathways, and, you know, every one of these students is just as important as the, the kids that graduate at the top of their class. And they deserve, they deserve to graduate. They deserve this just as much as anyone else. So you can't put a price on that kind of success.
You know, it really hits me when Dr. Maher puts it into percentages into numbers of kids that actually graduate. It's just another opportunity to help kids graduate. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you. All right. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Okay. Thank you very much. And can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Is there any? Sorry, I should ask, is there anything else that anyone else would like to discuss? No. Hearing none.
Still moved.
Thank you, Carly. Thanks.